Let's open a word of prayer and be remembering Lawrence and Candice. That's the family who moved to Australia or so ago. And Jillian's flying out tonight, Gary will be flying out in a few weeks. Lord, we ask for your blessing tonight. Lord, we have several families, I know some of our other families have already told me they've watched these sessions, who aren't able to be here tonight. And Lord, I'm reminded that you said, "When two or three are gathered in your name, there I am in the midst." And with this age of technology, we forget that it's even together over time and space. And Lord, I pray you help us to get good insight tonight on how to develop our children spiritually, academically, emotionally, socially, in all of these ways. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. So we don't have any grandparents here tonight, I don't think. But grandparents are famous for saying, "But my, this one is special." You know, you know that, "Oh, but this one." And I know with our own children as well, think, "Well, but my child is very special." And your child is very special. And your child can probably do some things better in a unique way that no one else can. But think about some like absolutely phenomenally special teenagers in Scripture. And it sets the bar kind of high. I don't think we're going to all attain into this. But if you think about Daniel, who we're going to look at tonight, he was a teenager who changed the world. He influenced kings, he influenced kingdoms. It started when he was a teenager. Another famous teenager of Scripture, David, when he was just a teenager, killed a giant, helped win a war. And then another teenager, one of my favorites, probably one of my all-time favorites of Scripture, Joseph. When he was only seventeen years, was sold as a slave, emerged thirteen years later. But think about some of these teenagers. There's some young ladies as well, we don't know her name. She may have been younger than a teenager, but probably early teens or younger, Naaman's servant. And there she gave a witness. We're starting a class on Sunday morning at nine o'clock, Grace Evangelism, how to share our faith. And it's following some of that model that she did. She just spoke about God in her life and challenged Naaman. This wasn't a nice guy, this was a general, the leader of the pagan army, not a nice man. I mean, he was famous for a lot of things. And she, he went all the way to Israel to seek this prophet and this God. Think about maybe the most famous teenage girl in Scriptures, Mary. Mary was most likely a middle teenager, late teenager possibly, probably in her middle teens. And she bore us, she bore the Christ child. I mean, these were young people. So sometimes we expect our children to excel only later in life. They can have influence and God can use them early. He can do things with them. They don't have to be a forty-five-year-old, you know, dad bod God. You think in the American military, I don't know unless you know the South African military, the American military, in the early twenties, mid twenties, they will give a young man or a young woman a piece of equipment that's worth a billion dollars. They'll put him in a jet, they'll put him in a tank. And they entrust them with life and death decisions to make the call, you know, on a special forces team or something like that. And sometimes in the church, we say, "You can't do anything yet. You're not fifty. You don't wear a black suit and tie." And we need to change the way we think sometimes in the church, that God thinks differently. Even Samuel was chosen from such a young age. And so with our children, I want you to think bigger. And if you think bigger, and I think more godly, I think they will as well. Tonight, we're going to look at three different areas, character, attitude, and giftedness. Character, attitude, and giftedness. Okay. So before we look at all the ways your child is absolutely amazing, more important than their giftedness is if you can determine the priority of character. That character is number one. That they may excel in cricket or rugby, they may become an amazing entrepreneur. And those things, often you see entrepreneurial skill even in grade school. All of those things may come, but you want to instill character from day one. So one of my favorite passages, it's not on your paper, Proverbs 22, verse one and two. A good name, a good name. So what are some things that you hope come to people's minds when they say your name? What would you like to be known for? I'd run a list of people. Okay, God-fearing, okay. Anybody else? It's like, "I hope this comes to mind." Honest? You don't have to be spiritual, do you? Do you also want to be honest? Anybody else? Well, okay, somebody else, something that comes to their mind, you know? Hopefully, you know, he's a guy who's happy, he's joyful. I think, "I want to have a good spirit. I hope I'm somebody that they want to be around." That's, you know, all of these things, you know, my attitude, my character. So when your face is seen somewhere... You did not approve that. A lot of things come to mind. When people think of your name, it's happened, it's already there. They've identified some things about you. And you want to instill that in your child early. More important than their giftedness, that will be part of their name. But their name is much more than that giftedness. So our child, you make a name for yourself, you go through school and say that name. "Oh, wow, you know, they're like top of the class in off-rare cons or something." That's good, that's great. Or, "Man, that guy can hit a ball like he..." "Man, did you see that trick shot he did?" Or, "Boy, they can..." Their penmanship, you know? It could be any of those things. But their name is attached to their giftedness. And at the school level, we can, and afterwards, we can attach it only to their giftedness. But we want to go a lot further than giftedness. Now, we're going to stick with Daniel. You can find it in the Scriptures or you've got it there probably in front of you. There's a lot about Daniel, and I don't know if you've ever thought about this. It says a lot of nice things about Daniel, but who wrote it? Daniel. So it's like, wait, I was looking over at this chapter, like, wait a minute. And sometimes you do find that in Scripture, but some of his comments are not, "And I was this, and I was this." It says, "This is what they were looking for." And a humble person can still be quite honest. But Daniel certainly was a gifted man. So what's happening in Daniel? Daniel happens after the nation of Israel has become so politically corrupt, socially broken, and morally bankrupt, that the nation of Israel, Ezekiel prophesied backwards, other guys prophesied forwards. Israel was cut up into three parts. A third of them were butchered. A third of them were taken as slaves. And a third of them were left in Israel. So they picked, and we find out here, verse three, Daniel 1, verse three. "And the king spake unto Ashbanaz, the master of his uniques, that he should bring certain of the children of Israel, and of the king's seed, and of the princes. Children, in whom was no blemish." They had to be beautiful, physically fit and attractive. "Well-favored, skillful in wisdom, cunning in knowledge, understanding in science, and such as had ability to stand in the king's palace, in whom they might teach the learning and tongue of the Chaldeans." And so they just obliterated, they killed one-third of the nation. They just mowed them down through several times of invasion. And then they picked out, they wanted them young so they could teach them and influence them. They wanted them to be of noble rank in birth so they knew how to also, you know, nice table manners and all of that stuff. And be able to be educated in the highest things that the Babylonians had. So this was the cream of the crop in the sense, not only were they of noble birth, from a wealthy background, but they also had to have gifts. And it lists, it doesn't just say that they had wisdom, it says they were skillful in wisdom. Not just knowledge, but cunning in knowledge. They could take knowledge and apply it to real life, into real world scenarios. And they didn't just know about science, they understood the science and could use it. And they could draw conclusions from it. And so Daniel was one of these. There were three. The Babylonian names Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, and Azeriah, and Ishmael, something. So these guys, families of nobility, their parents have been murdered, and they're here to learn the Babylonian culture. So their mental faculties were at the top of the nation. But notice they were also, they had to be socially groomed. So by the time they were teenagers, they had to be able to stand in the court. They had a new etiquette and manners, how to hold yourself, how to keep, know when to keep quiet, know when to talk. And they were going to then enculturate them into their life. So Daniel certainly was a gifted man. But it goes further than that in verse eight. "But Daniel purposed in his heart that he would not defile himself with the portion of the king's meat, nor with the wine which he drank; therewith he requested of the prince of the uniques that he might not defile himself." Now, what is it talking about? It's interesting, in First Corinthians, what kind of passage? First Corinthians, chapter eight, and First Corinthians, chapter ten, this law was lifted in the New Testament. In the Old Testament, you could never eat anything offered to idols. Or also, in their meal, just as we ask a blessing for the meal, they would many times do an idolatrous ceremony in taking the food to the idol. And so to eat, eat meat offered to idols was to publicly say, "I am worshiping that idol." And in the New Testament, we find that the church was said, "Don't worry about it anymore. You can eat meat that you buy anywhere. But if the person you're eating with thinks that you're worshiping his idol, don't. But otherwise, you are free." And so in our outline, we're going to say Daniel was a guided man. He had some purpose, he had some direction, he had some, somewhere he was going. Now think about this. He didn't purpose because it was convenient. If you've just watched a nation murder one-third of your whole people, genocide, and you say, "Sorry, I'm not going to do this," what is the very real possibility of saying, "No"? He just lost his whole family. He probably lost brothers and sisters as well. And so he says, "No," but he doesn't just say, "No," disrespectfully. He approaches, it seems he approaches one-on-one, the leader of the guard, so he doesn't undermine him. The wisdom with which he does this, he says, "Look, and can you just test me for ten days? I'll eat just veggies and water for ten days and see. If I don't look as good as the others, then I submit to you." He had such wisdom in how he offered this out. He didn't just say, "Aye, doing this, I'm, I gotta pay tax charges." But it certainly wasn't convenient. Nor did Daniel's guidance change with context. It wasn't like Daniel purposed in his heart when he was in Jerusalem, but now he's in Babylon. It's like, "You know what, there's just four of us boys." The context has changed, so I can change my behavior. So no, even though the context has changed, my purpose stays the same. And also the culture. Sometimes culture can be harmless, sometimes culture can be very damaging and even damning. And here, he did not allow these things. When it says purpose, the idea is he just, he decided, he made a resolution in his heart. This is the way I want to go. And this, this from a teenager. So we can talk about Daniel's giftedness, but underlying that, it was a man who had character. And I would submit that our children, if they grow up and do well academically, they do well in the business, they do well in sports, they do well in society. If they don't have character, if they haven't also ended up with a good name, the riches and the other things wouldn't suffice. I'd like to spend half of our time on the giftedness section, so I want to go over this next one a little quicker as well. Discover spiritual attitudes. Spiritual attitudes. How would you describe the difference between spiritual character, spiritual fruit, and spiritual gifts? What are some ways we could distinguish? If we were, we've been talking about character. Let's throw out some things about character. I think you mentioned honest, you mentioned God-fearing. What are some other? See, this is spiritual character. Just so we can see the difference in these columns in our minds. Spiritual character, spiritual fruit, and spiritual gifts. Character, what about patience? It could also be a fruit too. What about sincerity? Where would you put long-suffering? Character and fruit, a lot of them might be in the same column in your mind. The way I differentiate between them is, character is something that I'm actively developing. I need to parent character, and the child needs to develop. We exercise that character. Whereas if you go to Galatians, is it Galatians 5? Yes, Galatians 5, 22. "The fruit of the Spirit is something that God's Spirit does in the life of a believer." So can an unbeliever still have good character? Yeah. Technically, can they have the fruit of the Spirit? No. They could be patient, but it wouldn't be because it was the fruit of the Spirit. So in, this is just in my mind, and you can disagree with me, I'm just, for the context of parenting. Character is something I'm teaching my child, whether they're saved or not. "No, we don't lie in this house." Sorry, "I need to parent character. We do this, no, we work hard, no, we do..." Character is things, I'm trying to shape the direction you're going in life. Spiritual fruit is the benefit if they've come to faith in Christ. God's Spirit needs to grow these things inside them. And there's also a way to nurture that with God's Word, with Scripture memory, things like that. So to me, character, whether or not they're saved, I'm trying to form some things. And at least while you're in this house, this will be your character. These are the boundaries of character for our home. We don't swear here, I'm trying to instill a character. Fruit of the Spirit is an internal thing. Whereas character, we often form by external boundaries and rules. We do rules, but the idea of routine, we're helping them shape. A disciplined wholesome life is good. Fruit of the Spirit is an internal thing. Spiritual gifts, how do these differ? We're looking at this on Sunday, so I'm just going to mention it when we move on. How do spiritual gifts in our children even differ from fruit or character? I'm going to think about it. How do spiritual gifts differ from spiritual fruit or character? Spiritual gift given by God to benefit the church. Anybody want to add to that? The good answer, okay. I didn't get to finish my thing, okay. Wow. Okay, you don't get to answer that question. I had never thought about this until preparing for today, to start looking also at spiritual giftedness in the life of a child who has professed faith in Christ. It's something that I've only thought of, but once you become an adult and you get plugged into the church somewhere, and again, change our thinking. The Bible says, "If they are Christ, if they've been saved," he says, "I'm in them, and I'm going to help them, and I'm going to grow them, and I'm going to gift them." And that was an area for me this week, really been challenged. I've never considered that my children have, some of my children have spiritual gifts already, and I'm old enough for that. They are, if they come to faith in Christ. So when we talk about discovering spiritual attitude, how do we look at these things? And first of all, by observing. This isn't, you know, doing an end-of-school term examination with your son or daughter. "All right, we're going to do your spiritual attitude review." This is, sometimes a school term can help where there's marked points of time. For me, I've noticed unconsciously, after a long school holiday, we're going into a school term, sometimes I've seen a real growth, not just here, but also, they just, they just look mature. There's a twelve-year-old in junior youth, I'm not talking about John this time, but he went away in June and he came back in July, and he looked like a different person. He just, in four weeks, he's holding himself different. And sometimes I've seen a break from school and just free, that they settle a bit and now back to the form. So maybe it's a birthday, maybe it's a holiday, maybe it's a school term. But the idea that I actually consciously try to observe is my child growing. It's a husband and wife, "Hey, I noticed this." Where one of us will be insanely frustrated, "I can't get my head around this." Another one will say, "Yeah, I think something has changed. The person has grown, and here's the good part about it, here's the bad part about it." But we observe, we talk, we pray. And we look into these things, and we're looking specifically, is their character developing? Is there a spiritual fruit that God is growing in their lives? As you start to have some family Bible time where you're praying at night, I've been amazed, the one, two, three, four sentence prayer at night, one of my children, that's when they drop a nugget of information. And it's good night, I'm walking out the door and it'll be like, "Dad?" It's like, "Yeah?" "So this happened today?" "Oh, yeah? Tell me, what do you mean, what's going on?" So it doesn't usually work to sit them down, does it, and say, "Tell me, how are you doing spiritually lately, by..." But are they growing? How they relate to their friends? How they relate to the church and something they learned? "What'd you learn in class today?" And one year, it's just, "Oh, we played," and then you notice the next year, "Teacher said this." Your mind, your spirit is starting to awaken to the truth of Scripture. And you observe those things, those aren't random. We are looking for them. For character, are they timid at school, they need courage? Do they need joy because they have a tendency of a negative spirit? So we're going to be looking at verses there. And spiritual giftedness, maybe it is later years, it might be high school years. But for me to be challenged, at least start looking. So secondly, then, by applauding. So once you see something good, you want to praise it. And I had never seen this connection, I've heard this advice before, but I had never connected it to this Scripture. In Proverbs 23, you should have it on your paper there, he says, "My son, if thine heart be wise, my heart shall rejoice, even mine; yea, my reign shall rejoice when thy lips speak right things." And it's true, when my sons or daughter do well, I'm excited. But do I tell them? So Jeremy, I'm not sure how it works in your house, but my mouth runs a lot with correction and direction. Is that how yours? I think fathers, maybe we are more... But I'm not as free with my praise. So I don't want to embarrass, but can you think of the last time you praised one of your children? Was it today? Was it last week? Was it three months ago? When was the last time you corrected your child? Ah, five minutes ago. They do need a lot of correction and direction. But if they have done well, if they have behaved wisely, if they have said something that was good, that we learned, that we work as parents to be quick to praise it. "I'm so proud of you, you just did that. Thank you for helping there. I saw what you did for your sister. I saw how you interacted, that was good." And that positive reinforcement, I've heard Julie talk about that in early childhood development. You know, you're limited in the school system, you know? You can't tie them up with rope to a chair, you know, or other things, you know? So you, positive reinforcement is powerful, that this is good, this is good. And some children thrive on that, others less so. But I thought that was an inner, "My heart is rejoiced, but let my lips also be free to tell them that you did well." Again, in Proverbs 10:1, "A wise son makes a glad father." But the child must know that they have made me glad. That is active parenting. For a child to do well, and the father's been glad, he's been glad, he's been glad, but he's never told him. And I've heard expressions like this, "But I've been proud of you," from a grown son and a grown... "But I've always been..." "But you never told me." "But I've always loved you, but you never told me." "I've always thought you've been great at that, but you never told me." We have to, we have to say it. And the nurture and admonition in Ephesians 5, the second word literally means, "With our words." So by applauding. This isn't, this isn't the, you know, the dishonest applauding. You know, don't tell your kid, "You know, you're probably about the fifth best in the class." You just say, "That's great." But you don't also lie to them, you don't want to build false self-esteem and say, "Oh, man, you're better than everybody," and, you know, he knows he's not better than everybody. He knows he's getting better. She knows, "I'm awesome." You say, "But you did well." So it must be honest praise, and it must be attached to a specific action. And it's best if it's attached not just to their giftedness on the field, or with their voice, but with character. Notice here, he says, "When you have acted wisely, when your lips spoke right." And some parents, we can get caught up in the trap where we praise them all day long for their, for their dance recital and their vocal talent, and for this. But they go and lie and steal and cheat, and we don't pray. We teach their character and their giftedness by praising. I'm sorry, I've run into a problem. You talk a lot about positive reinforcement in school. Do you want to add anything to that with your little ones or practical advice there away from them? Okay. Okay, I remember that phrase, for sake of the, those watching, she was saying, catch them doing right, not just catch them doing wrong. Oh, I saw you did that, that was great, and look in their eyes, they know that they're communicating. You have the oldest children, I think, in this group, do they still like positive reinforcement? One more than the other, or you just, they just, they love it? John, so the boy needs it more than the, at this point? And how old is John? Twenty-two, but you're still his dad. Okay, so these are two ways, once we've observed and we can catch them out. I caught you! Doing well, then I'd like to move then to how do we develop natural gifts? Developing natural gifts. And let's think first of all, our first category is gonna be creative gifts. Then we'll talk about physical abilities and also academic growth. But first of all, creative gifts. And under creative gifts, let's think about things like music, or art, or literature. And I love this one, in the book, he talks about this one, and he gives us the verses about it. He says the word construction. It's like, construction? What do you mean? That's a gift. And notice the passages, and, and once I saw it, I remembered, I remembered reading these before. Uh, yes, he gives David, he could play the harp, he could also write, so he talks about literature. But in this passage, in Exodus, when they were building the tabernacle, it says, i- i- it ties the guy's constructive ability to the Holy Spirit of God. I was like, man, that's awesome. Uh, he says, "And Moses said unto the children of Israel, See, the Lord hath called thee, called by name, Bezaleel, the son of Uriah, the son of Hurah, of the tribe of Judah, and he hath filled him with the Spirit of God, in wisdom and understanding and in knowledge, in all manner of what? Of books? No, of workmanship." It is, it's a, it's a sad thing that our world often, and it's, it's, it's becoming a huge issue in South Africa, that we say, if you go to university, you are better or smarter than if you become a tradesman. And I think probably, if you go to university in this country, you make more money, you have more opportunity. It is changing in America, and certainly in the UK. A tradesman can earn huge bucks because it's become so lopsided. If you know how to lay bricks in America, you can make sixty dollars an hour. That's nice money. So here, I love that it says, his workmanship, he was doing it for the Lord, that he was actually spiritual, and it even mentions, touches on, my second time in this passage, it says, "Them hath he filled with the wisdom of heart to work all manner of work. The engraver, the cunning, the embroiderer in blue and purple and scarred fine, the weaver." I mean, these are craftsmen. And we do wrong when we think, if you can get the book knowledge, yeah, that's fine. But if you know how to build something or sew something, oh, that's fine. That can be of God. These are creative gifts, and so it'd be easy for us as parents to try to steer our children into the, the most economically beneficial career. But what if they wanna be a tradesman? The temptation to live vicariously through them. Uh, Julie and I were watching a comedian a while back, and Nigerian lady, she was funny. Everybody in your family was doctors. You could be a doctor or a lawyer, that were the only two options. And she wanted to be a comedian. It did not go over well in the family. And it, it ended up okay because she was a really good comedian, probably made big bucks doing that. But any parent you find, how do you guide your child into better economic situation? Or, that I think they'd be better at this? Are any of you in that place yet? You got some older ones? Is this about, no, you're, don't tell me about which one, but you have different aptitudes in different children, I'm sure. Good job, Mika! Yeah, so, and did you do that just 'cause you knew where you were coming to? Okay, I, yeah. We took the apt, John just took the aptitude test, and some of it looked right, but how do you know when you're twelve or sixteen? Start at seven, yeah. And to be able to change. How old is your oldest? Ten? You're not dealing with this so much yet. So that would be character reinforcement. Whether you like it or not, we need to do well in everything. Is she very strict on you too? Okay, so she's saying, uh, character development with a ten-year-old, work hard in everything because if you decide to be lazy, you don't know the repercussions ten years ago. Am I correct in my observation that in South Africa, uh, varsity is, that's the elite, and if you're not smart enough, you go be a tradesman? Is that a sentiment? Is it changing? The educated started lower. Okay. Certainly, okay, in the mining industry. Okay. Okay. I didn't want to go to university, I planned on not going. And then the Lord said, you're going, you have to go, you're gonna be a minister. So I don't think I had, uh, an affinity for study or things like that, so. I think, that's some good insight, when we talk about creative gifts, some cultures or environments, maybe if we were in Cape Town, it'd be very different than in the mining sector here. So, but the creative industries are not bad, they're not less, they're not inferior. And it could be divinely ordained of God, this child is gonna just, they're gonna be creative. And especially in the arts, the music industry, you know, it's, it's phenomenally difficult to make a living if you wanna be a voice instructor or something like that. Well, if the child is going that way, then yeah. That maybe they need to develop their entrepreneurial skills, their business acumen, so that what's not gonna work well, I mean, maybe that industry's not gonna make money, then, then beef it up with this, and this, and this, so you can have the tools to make that work, if you want to make it work. And so that would be a way we can develop that gift because we could step back and see a little bigger, and see, okay, then you're gonna need this, and this, and this to help support or prop it up. And you'll do well. Let's think then about physical abilities. Now, this is gonna be a, a pretty wide application, I think. But it is worth mentioning, when it talks about in Daniel one-four, that these guys had no blemish. And it also talks about their diet. And I just want to say, I am not a proponent of the Daniel diet. There's whole churches, you can buy the curriculum, and I am not saying, let's all do the Daniel diet. There is nowhere in scripture that says the Daniel diet was spiritual. They said, we won't eat meat because it's been offered to idols. It had nothing to do with vegetarianism being healthier. If you wanna be a vegetarian, fine, and I'm sure there's some health benefits. Uh, but please don't make the text suit your particular dietary desires. And so by, when I say it's a wide application, Daniel is just recording history. He's not setting an agenda for our diet. This was an ungodly nation, thinking only from the fleshly perspective. And in their mind, why wouldn't you say? If you're gonna wipe out an entire nation, of course you would say, keep the pretty smart ones. That's who we're interested in. So when it says no blemish, uh, sorry, if you had, you know, I don't know, demange, or I don't know, whatever you're, you didn't get to go, sorry. So some of us wouldn't have fared as well, you know? But that's not an adequate teaching to say, make your children, make sure they're beautiful so they succeed in life. Okay, so I'm just gonna take a, a wide application here. That it was important to an unbelieving world, their physical appearance. In the scripture, our view of our bodies is that we should, the consistent view in the scriptures is that we should honor our bodies, that we should also self-discipline our bodies in all of its desires. Sexual, physical, with diet, the Proverbs put a knife to thy throat if you can't control your eating. There is no scripture that sets a weight limit or a body fat index. And our Western influence on what the ideal body shape is can be incredibly damaging, especially to teenagers, and especially to teenage girls. The pressures to be thin from a Western idea of what is beautiful. You know, in South Africa, cultures have different, uh, desires around certain body shapes, don't they? Yeah, that's everywhere in the world. And even in history, in the Western, in Western history, if you see Western art from a few hundred years ago, everybody was very plump, and that was the ideal body shape. So, give yourself a wide berth, and whatever you decide on your diet, or your health, or your body image, a Christian view is, the body is good. Take care of it, keep it healthy, be disciplined. But nowhere in scripture does it say, and you need to have this figure. And we don't want to, this is a wide application. Get your children at a healthy view of their body, and, and I would just say some, some balance. In his book, he says, have a better diet. And I've never used that. Just have a, a good way of living. You know, I'm not a person who says, never any sugar, never any Coke. You know, we all like Coke. But in our family, I was drinking too much Coke. Coke on the weekends, or if I go out to eat. So it's like, hopefully I'm showing my children, I, I will, I can discipline myself. Uh, he's not saying that we have to be vegetarian, doesn't say we only have to drink water. But some things with your children, you can, you can look at sugar content. And usually, one or two children in the family will love sweets and the others won't. The idea of exercise, well, can you force your children to exercise? It would be better if, if maybe they could do some activity. But we have a, a much bigger problem with this in America than here. In Americans, we don't go outside. Here, we can kick our kids outside, sorry. Outside, just for our own sanity. Outside for an hour, and I'm locking the door, you know? And they go out and they run around and play, just, they just need, they cannot have screen time all the time. And, and that should be regulated, so you're just saying, you know what? I wanna, I wanna be better, and I want a healthy view of our bodies. And, and that my children know I love them, whatever their body shape is. And that they see in me some, some form of discipline. If I was in Daniel's position, could I have even done without any of the wine for ten days, or the meat for ten days? He said, you know what? That's not gonna be helpful for this time, I'll just eat veggies and water. We know he wasn't off her con, so. And without giving us your really personal dietary exercise regiment, any of you have some suggestions or things you've had to change or do over the years about the physical growth of your children, and maybe even your husband or your wife? I don't get hungry either. Okay. Well, so when my, so you have to force your child to eat. So, when my two younger ones get home from school, their lunchbox is never eaten. So Julie goes to rest, they have to sit down at the table, and they don't, they don't get up from that table till they're, I'm sorry, that sandwich has to be gone. So, it's not forcing like sitting on their head, you know? But, sorry, no playtime, no iPad till the sandwich is gone, then they eat. Anybody else? Jeremy? Is this every meal? Okay. So your goal, your long-term goal, do you still give, 'cause I'll come to your house. Okay, so you're weaning him off, but just helping him get in. Okay. Okay. But you had a, you had a good goal in mind, and you got there. Here's some controversy. Uh, so for the recording, he was bribing him, and that he's been weaning him off of the bribes, and now he's eating his food, so good man. Uh, there's an idea, I've seen some articles, should we say you have to eat everything on your plate? No? Okay. Okay. We, we sort of, in our family, we sort of had the rule, you eat on your plate. But, but if mommy's really hungry, their plates get really full. So, sometimes we have to, halfway through the meal, we're like, actually, you're fine, you could be done. So we don't have a hard and fast rule. It is really funny to watch. Wow, mom's really hungry tonight. But, but the principle is there, a couple principles are there, that you do eat what is on your plate. You don't get to tell us what you're eating. Uh, so we start with the standard, we all finish, but it is up for negotiation, and sometimes, can I just eat? Alright, finish half of that, you're done. And the other thing is, you have to eat some of everything. Hey, I'm sorry
Uh, take, I'm sorry, you have to take one bite, you know, something like that. So I'm trying to develop some character, and I'm not trying to be cruel. And probably in fifteen years, my wife's only made five things we couldn't eat. I mean, she's really good. So, uh, where she would, it's like, you know, the, sorry, kids, we're done, we're not, you... But, uh, she's really good. So I know I'm not being unreasonable there. And then, in my family growing up, there was the, every person could have one thing that they never had to eat. My sister hated fish, she never had to, we were having fish, she just had everything else. Darla had pizza. So just draw a line somewhere, or have some boundaries, I think, with your food, with exercise, and encourage that. We spent more time there than I wanted to. What about academic growth? John, can you hit that?
Well, academic growth is the last one. There you go, now you can see it's still... And we come back to Daniel here, and it talks about wisdom, knowledge, and science. Remember, this was an unbelieving world's requirement. But it does show you also that Daniel was trained in this. He did have an aptitude for it. He certainly had the means. If he was from a noble birth, which presumably also was a wealthy home, he had access to wisdom and knowledge and tutoring and science that a lot of the people in Israel didn't. So it would be unfair to say, everybody, uh, you know, in our church, we have a huge financial spectrum of salaries in our church. And, and we have several families in private school, some in public schools, some in location school. And, and we do know, not always, but many times, finances gets better education, or at least smaller class size. But private school does not guarantee that your child's gonna do well academically, does it? It doesn't, i- i- it can mean a smaller class, it can be more engaged school. And those can be good things, but don't ever think that because my child is in private school, we're gonna be okay. Or that God owes it to you. And, and I remember, three years ago, we were actually moving our children out of private school, and then Julie got a job, and we were very impressed with some of the public schools in the bank. And so we don't wanna fall into that trap, where we think, "My kid has to be in that school." Daniel did have exposure to the best, and it did help him. And I think we should do the best that we can with what we have. And the world is full, our church is full, of individuals who have done very well in life, economically, job, and with the Lord, who didn't have the access to Daniel's education. But notice the perspective here, that they were looking for. That they were skillful in the wisdom, cunning, in the knowledge, and understanding, in the science. Your child may get great marks in science, but do they know how to think through science? And think through, what is, what is true science, and what is theory? What has been observed and tested, and what is just their hypothesis, because they are outright rejecting God? What is, you know, our presupposition of faith, because we believe in the creation? Their presupposition of something else? Are you engaging with your child, not just on his science mark, but say, "What do you think about that? Wow, that's amazing, you know, or, I wonder how that fits with this." What about, uh, their knowledge? So they're getting lots of knowledge, but can they apply it? Can they use it? And so you have an active role there, in those first three words, that they become skillful, cunning, understanding. You're gonna help them take what they're getting in school, and you need to help them actually use it. So, you know, if you're at a coal washing plant, you know, uh, uh, in the, in the trade, you're in construction, and things like that, you know? And the kid's learning, "What does this have to do with, man, I use it, man, I use that every day." You do? "Yeah, I'm having to figure out this, and I have to figure out this." That's why when I was in, in school, my math grade was, was quite low, and then I found out that air force pilots had to take a lot of math. And I started working hard on math, because I wanted to be an air force pilot. Because the thought process of algebra, algebra, I hated algebra. It was, it made no sense to me, but it makes perfect sense to me. Algebra is not about, you'll never be going through Pick and Pay and need an algebra sum, I mean, X minus Y. Algebra is about, it trains your mind in logic. If A equals B minus C over Y, it is logic. And, uh, they used to teach that in classical education, how to get your mind to problem solve and think. That's what algebra is, it's not about the math! It's about, can your mind problem solve? And that's why a pilot needs math. He has to observe things and make calculations, and put, if this, then that, and this, and that. Oh, they need your mind to grow there. We can help our children learn that. So if that helps John get through algebra, then you're gonna be an air force pilot. Fine. But the application of what they're learning, that this matters in real world scenario. So our homework for this week. I'd like you to think about those three words, I talked to you about the tables. Spiritual character, spiritual fruit, spiritual gifts. What part of those is my job? Spiritual gifts, none, spiritual fruit, I can nurture that, character development, I can insist on boundaries, and hopefully I'm training. But like, the character of my child, the fruit in my child, and the giftedness of my child. Maybe I'm always in number one, "You will do this," I'm very boundary oriented, and I need to be more spiritually minded, see, "God, would you start growing this for me?" Maybe, if you're like me, I never even thought about the spiritual giftedness of my child. They're gonna tear you up there. God, what do you have for them? But I would like you to be aware of those things, and then in this book on this subject, he recommended, uh, highlighting one character each week. I like that. I like the idea of highlighting a spiritual fruit each week, and taking Galatians five twenty-three to twenty-six. And maybe that would be something for you to do with your, your Bible time, whatever, you know, on Sunday night. Here's our, this is the one, we're gonna look at a verse on kindness this week. Or long-suffering and impatient. But to actually start character development, maybe find stories, talk to some other pack people in the church. Hey, do you know any stories about why you should do well in all of your subjects? I've got a verse for that, actually. You know, that we actively do this, character, spiritual fruit, and then giftedness. If you have a child who is saved, who knows the Lord, and is maybe ol- getting older, where they can at least talk to you about this, maybe that'd be an interesting discussion to have. Have you ever thought about, what does God want you to do for him? And go outside of your, your physical role and your job, you know, or training for our aptitude test? But I think that is a, a neat direction to go, especially with our teenagers, and help them to become aware that God wants to use them. Any closing questions, comments? God will use our children, and this is something I've asked Clive to start looking into, and he is, that, uh, we identify youth specifically, junior youth from twelve and up, that have professed faith in Christ, been willing to publicly profess that through baptism, and say, "You need to start serving God." Not, we're not interested in getting all the youth involved, we're wanting to grow them in gifts as well. And, uh, we can do that also, I think, as much for the Lord. We ask you to help us to grow the giftedness in our children, not just in sports or in academics, but in their character, and in their physical abilities, in their physical bodies, in their academics, Lord, all of these areas. And that you'd help us, Lord, as we have opportunity to parent and influence our colleagues, or friends, or neighbors, and maybe do informal peer review with each other, and challenge each other on these things, Lord, and challenge ourselves to grow your, in character, and fruitfulness, and identification of the spiritual giftedness you've bestowed upon your children. We pray for these things in Jesus.